Emma, before you take us live, can you change my name to maybe?
Yeah, I can change it right now. You got it. Mayor, we are live.
Okay, welcome everyone. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 5th, 2022. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune, an email to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on April 14th, 2022, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey on April 14th, 2022, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As mayor, I preside over the council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Councilman Hirsch, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
To the Republic.
To the Republic.
And one nation.
A nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
With liberty and justice.
For all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Brill-Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera? Councilwoman Foster?
Here.
Councilman George? Councilman Hale? Councilmember Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Chohan?
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Is here.
Assistant of the Borough Administrator Von Toon?
I'm here.
Okay, I do want to note that both council members Hale and Council President Phil George have excused absences. Council President George is taking care of a family member for health reasons. And Councilman Hale asked me to let everyone know he has COVID and is recuperating at home. All right, to council members who are here, do you have any questions on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We have a couple of honors awards proclamations or presentations. First, I wanted to let everyone know that I'm issuing a proclamation to the Arab American Foundation. Whereas, since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants. And whereas they brought with them to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy. And whereas for over a century, Arab Americans have been have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, culture. And whereas Arab Americans have also enriched our society by sharing in the entrepreneurial American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. And whereas, according to the Arab American Institute, approximately 3.7 million Americans trace their roots to an Arab country. And whereas they join the many Americans who strive for a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feel safe. Now therefore I, Gail Brill-Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby join the Arab American Foundation in declaring April 2022 to be National Arab American Heritage Month. We encourage our citizens to join us in this special observance and to learn more about the many contributions Arab Americans have made to our society. I also want to give a shout out to longtime resident Sheila Highsmith, who has been a volunteer in Highland Park for decades. She was a longtime chair of our Human Relations Commission and has served on other boards and commissions here in Highland Park. And Sheila has the honor of retiring from her professional life. So Sheila, we all wish you much happiness, enjoy lots of travel, and health in your retirement. We'll find plenty for you to do, Sheila. Okay. Council reports. I'm going to go in order of how you appear on my screen. So Councilman Matt Hirsch, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor. Just quickly, I'm just going to remind, I'm Matt Hirsch. I chaired the Borough's Arts and Recreation Committee. And obviously, there's a lot going on. But I'm going to encourage everybody to just go to www.hielenparkrec.com to check out just the abundance of programming that is taking place. Also, please mark your calendars for July 3rd is when the Highland Park New Brunswick fireworks will take place. I did just want to just report on one new item. So our Arts Commission is exceptionally active and exceedingly creative by design. They wouldn't be there if there weren't. And there is a new program that they have put together that is really exciting. This is a partnership, again, with the Highland Park Recreation Department. And this is the HP25024 Writing Contest. And this is a writing contest, and it's a townwide writing contest open to any resident regardless of age. It's called the HP25024 because you're only allowed to write a story that's 250 words or less, and you'll only be given 24 hours to submit your story after receiving your assignment. So it's a very, very cool concept. And I am going to participate in this Arts Commission. And special thanks to Nikki Gonzalez for the creativity behind this, working with Kimberly McGraw, also at the Rec Department for putting this together. So here's how it works. You register to participate at hielenparkrec.com, the website I just mentioned. It's under Programs. And then at midnight on Saturday, April 30th, you'll receive an email with a writing assignment. Your assignment will have a genre: horror, romance, historical fiction, fantasy. There'll be an action, going on a first date, falling off a bicycle, et cetera, and a random word. All of these have to be in your 250-word story. From midnight Saturday, you have 24 hours until Sunday night, midnight, to email your story back. And then the Arts Commission will provide the return email with your assignment. The members of the Highland Park Arts Commission will read through all the returns and select the winners. It's a really, really cool concept. I love this. I just absolutely love this. The Borough will be promoting this as well. 250 words. It's such a, as a writer myself, kind of, you know, brevity and economy of words is paramount. I happen to talk too much, so keeping things down to a nice concise limit is really important, gets your message across, and it also forces you to put in all of your thoughts and creativity into a nicely confined space. So check out www.hielenparkrec.com. Also, you can also, you can also read more about it on the Highland Park Arts Commission Facebook page on Facebook. And that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Sounds like a fun contest, Matt.
That's cool.
Okay, Councilwoman Kim Chohan, you're up next.
I'm nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Councilwoman Foster, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to report and re-report. One of the good things that happened is that that traffic light we talked about on North Fourth and Raritan, surprisingly enough, without any notice, the DOT came and they just put it up. And it just by chance that we, the, one of our police officers drove by and there it was. It was totally installed. However, we want to make some adjustments to it. I'm not complaining because normally these things take forever. But now that we have it in place, I am happy. The next step for us is that we would like to make it a little bit bigger. So it's much more visible. And the emails have been going and going and going and going. We haven't gotten a response to it, but at least we're on the right track. It is installed, and we just want to remind everyone to just follow the rules of the road that's installed down by North Fourth coming onto Raritan. You can't make that turn. While I'm on pedestrian safety, Councilmember Hirsch and I have been working on getting the pedestrian safety with SWAC. Getting pedestrian safety awareness campaign going. We keep Middlesex moving. As you remember, a couple of weeks ago, that Councilmember Hirsch had a host of people that did this awesome presentation about the SWAC project, with keep Middlesex moving, how we're going to do the project. We want to roll this out at the end of April, I'm sorry, end of May. But we want it to be Highland Park, based Highland Park grown. So Councilmember Hirsch and I have been working on making sure that it's fully represented of Highland Park. So we should have that campaign with our own homegrown material at the end of May. So look out for that. It's been a long project that he's been working on and trying to keep us all safe with public safety. So that should be coming end of May. And we will be doing a big show of this when it does happen because it's something that Councilmember Hirsch has been working on for a tremendous amount of time. Also, former Councilmember, welcome. Is she, this was one of her babies, one of her projects. So, you know, kudos for Councilmember Hirsch moving it forward. And now we're working with it through public safety. So we should get it together. The Police Department, Police Chief is working on it. So we should have it in place in short order. So that's that. While I'm on public safety, another thing is that we, the campaign for click it or ticket is on and not using your cell phone while you're driving. So there's a huge campaign going on until the end of the month. But you should not just follow the rules only because it's a campaign going on. We all should be following these road rules to keep each and every one of us safe. We've had a number of accidents here in town and across the country. And it's just something that we all must pay attention to in order to keep everyone safe. So the campaign is going on. Please stay off your cell phone. You, click it or ticket is going to be happening. And there are notices all over the place for you to be aware and to be an alert driver. Incidentally, there was a campaign that, there's a survey that the Borough did, and we were given this challenge to take the traffic challenge. And it is not easy because there's so much distraction on the road. And I think it's really cool. I think we should be able to share it and let people put up on our website and let people try it and see how well they do. Distracted driving survey. And it's this whole thing that you take, takes about 25 minutes. But it's super informative, and it lets you be aware of all the distractions that are on the road. And it's challenging to keep us focused while we're driving. So the cell phone is the worst topic. So let's stay away from the cell phone and stay focused while driving. Irving School, over on 11th Avenue by Irving School. There has been a downlights now, the down traffic light. And it has been done, I would say, for the past six weeks. We are fully aware that this light is down. Problem is, this is the one time in town that the traffic light does not belong to DOT. That's our traffic light. And we are working on getting the parts to fix the light and to have it reinstalled. That's the problem. As we all know, there's a huge problem with the supply chain in getting supplies in and getting things fixed. It's taken a lot longer than we anticipated. The parts are ordered. We're waiting for them to come in. As soon as they come in, then we will be addressing it and fixing the problem over and over there at 11th and by Irving. And hopefully, keep our fingers crossed that this will happen in short order, and it won't take forever. Last week, we had the first part in a series of conversation with our, with a cop. And Officer O'Mara, Brian O'Mara, he was there at our community center to have this conversation. Just want to remind people that he will be available again on April 26th, May 3rd, and May 31st. And the hours will be from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. If you just want to stop in and have a conversation, he's going to be there. And to have any, no matter what you want to talk about, he'll be there to talk and share, and any kind of questions you have, he'll answer. And our Junior Cadet Academy is coming up. That will be from July 11th to the 15th. It's going to be 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. There are still seats available. Anyone who's interested, please reach out to Officer O'Mara. A phone number 732-572-3800, extension 4262. So they're looking forward to having another. We went on hiatus last year, but it's back. And officers are looking forward to the full engagement with our youth. That's it. And that's, thank you very much, Mayor. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right. Emma, do you have a report on behalf of the Borough Administrator?
She had nothing to report for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple of things. First, I want to say that I hope everyone had a very happy Easter, happy Passover, a meaningful Ramadan, and that you got to spend time with your family and had an opportunity to reflect on your life, the lives of those around you, and this wonderful world that we're living in these days. I'm pleased to report that as of May 1st, the Borough's cycle of 2022's Park Partners Program will begin. Under the Park Partners Grant Program, the Borough of Highland Park invites applications from residents, holds a public exhibition and voting session for all submissions, and then provides up to $2,000 each to help execute five winning projects. This is our way of giving back to our community. Project applications must be in one of the following five categories: environment, the arts, culture and diversity, safety, universal access, or health and wellness. And there is a separate category for Highland Park High School students or class projects. The winning application in each category will be decided in an applicant's exhibition and voting session held on Sunday afternoon in June in the Highland Park Community Center. Date to be determined. Only Borough residents are eligible to participate in the voting session. Applicants must complete an application, which is accessible on our website, and submitted to our communications person, Harry Glazer, who is going to accept them by Tuesday, June 7th at 1:00 p.m. For more information, please email Harry at HGlazer. That's H-G-L-A-Z-E-R at hpboro.com. I do want to say that I've often stated how important I believe public art is in enhancing the day-to-day lives of all of our residents. We've seen creativity spring up in many unique ways, such as park benches, landscaping, and of course, the ever-popular colorful murals that bedeck several of our buildings. Many residents have voiced excitement to see the new mural quickly going up and taking shape on the side of the building at 75 Raritan Avenue. And I'm happy to share that in our working session, I'll be discussing a proposal for yet another unique mural to be placed on one of the entryways into Highland Park. This mural project will demonstrate the connection between Highland Park and neighboring New Brunswick. All of these projects further enhance Highland Park's positive reputation as a home of free expression and creativity. Thank you. Okay. It's now time for our first public discussion session. Total time allotted is 21 minutes. Three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item that is not listed, please do so at the second public comment session later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is 30 seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your key phone, your phone keypad now, or select the raise hand button in this application. Please press star six to unmute yourself when you're called upon. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name, as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic that is on this agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
All right, Mayor. First, we have David Hughes.
Okay. David, please state your name and your address.
Good evening. This is actually Melanie McDermott. I share the same residence. I would like to speak to you about an item on the agenda. It's 13C. It's Proposed Ordinance Number 222050, Reconstituting the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. And let me complete my self-introduction. I live at 330 South Third Avenue, and I am co-chair of the Shade Tree Committee. So firstly, we thank the council for the concern that we be properly constituted by statute. We were not aware of any defect in that regard. I must say, it hasn't hampered us, but it's a good thing to get it, to get it fixed. As my colleague and co-chair, Rosie Baruch, who is herself an attorney, we filed some comments with our Borough Attorney requesting some corrections be made to this ordinance before it's passed. So our request is that it be tabled tonight. If you do decide to move on it, we request that the amendments be amended as soon as possible. I will just read a few of the concerns we have about the proposed ordinance. So for example, this ordinance requires that STACK, that's our acronym, our handle, be comprised of 15 members. We currently have, I think, nine. We've never had 15. So sort of out of the starting gate, we might not be in good order. The substantive concern is that our existing mission, which is to advise, and I say advise, we have no authority. We're a committee. We're not a commission, to advise the Public Works Committee and the Public Works Department and the Borough about the planting and care of trees. This new ordinance specifically state exempts from those responsibilities the areas zoned as the Central Business District, the Commercial District, and the Professional Office District. Without giving a public policy reason for this exception, we in fact are responsible for working with the Borough to stay in compliance with the Community Forestry Act of the state. And in so doing, we help prepare. We work with the forester every five years to have a community forestry mandate passed. That is meant to cover the entire Borough, and it would seem to weaken its value and perhaps get out of compliance not to, you know, cover the Central Business District. And in fact, we're in the process of working with the Borough to prepare a grant proposal for tree planting on Woodbridge Avenue. So that's a bit mystifying. And I'll also note that one of the things we do and are currently doing is provide comments to the planning board on site development reviews. So should we cease to do those things until these items are corrected? So we have supplied these written comments. So we'd like to ask that they be considered.
So, thank you, Melanie. We have been talking, the Borough Attorney and I, and several of the council members have been talking about this. Borough Attorney, do you want to address this?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We did receive the suggested changes from STACK. And we have decided, however, and I'd recommended that we go ahead and consider adopting the ordinance tonight. All that does is move the STACK back into the codebook, which for some reason, it was deleted by an inadvertent mistake. And then I believe there is a process where any substantive changes to STACK, and a few of those were just mentioned about the jurisdiction of STACK and where they can make recommendations. And I believe that process should go through one of the committees. And once that occurs, we can very promptly prepare an ordinance amendment and present that to you for introduction. But I do believe we ought to get STACK at least back into Chapter 9 with all the other commissions and committees tonight.
Yeah, and I believe also that this would fall under Council President Phil George's committee. So I would urge that all of the concrete changes that you've been recommending, Melanie, go to that committee first so that he can get sign-off from those council members. And then we would bring the amendments to the council as a whole in a public work session so that any questions could be answered. And then finally, it would go up for a vote for a change to the existing ordinance. Councilman Hirsch, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Ed, for clarifying. I was just briefly in touch with Melanie prior to the meeting. And as I'm a member of the Public Works Committee, as is Councilwoman Canavera. So we look forward to adjusting this ordinance, you know, as we go forward. And I have not spoken with Council President George about this. But I'm just wondering, why was, and this is probably a question for the last meeting, but what was it exactly that? Why was the ordinance out of compliance with Chapter 9?
Borough Attorney, do you want to address that?
Well, Mr. Hirsch, I'd say about a year or so ago, we collected all of the resolutions that you would annually adopt to reappoint and reconstitute probably the 10 or 12 commissions that provide advice. And the recommendation was to move them into the code. And for some reason, and I remember talking to Joan Hollings about it, we're not sure why the STACK was not included as one of those items. It was either left out inadvertently by us or it was left out when the codifiers put the code together. So we realized that, or I guess Joan and Jen realized that the effort here was to simply move them back into the code. And there was nothing intended in terms of changing their mission or defrocking them or anything else. It was just really getting them back in with all the other commissions and boards. And now this would involve the next step, which would be the consideration of substantive or material changes to the ordinance, which your committee can listen to and then make recommendations about. That's why it was just, for some reason, it fell out of the ordinance when the major ordinance was done, moving all of the other entities into the code where they weren't before.
So you're saying it was an oversight?
Yes, exactly. It was an oversight. STACK was intended to be on the list of 12 or 13 of these boards and commissions. And for some reason, maybe they were on the last page because they're ass, I don't know. But somehow, they fell out. And when the code was printed with the new, all of the other agencies in there, the Clerk's office realized that STACK did not make it into the code. That didn't do anything to them. That didn't do anything to them substantively in terms of they still existed. And if they're authorized to have 15 members and they have nine now, that's perfectly fine. But so what we're talking about, I think, is moving forward with some changes and updates to the STACK ordinance. This is just moving the STACK ordinance into the code so that we have it with all the other boards and commissions.
Thank you. Councilman?
Sorry. Thank you. I guess two things, though. So this is the old, this is the existing STACK ordinance that should have been brought into code, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then I guess, is there an urgency to to include this in the code, considering that there will be amendments? Or are we, do we need to act with, you know, it's time of the essence?
So my understanding is that if we don't have them in the code now, they don't technically exist. Is that corrected?
Well, technically, yes, because we used to reconstitute every board and commission by a separate resolution at your reorganization meeting. And the Clerk's Office recommended that we avoid doing that by moving everybody into the code. And that's what we did, I think, two years ago or a year ago. So I think it would be wise to get them up and running since they are doing important work and they're making recommendations to the planning board, et cetera. I'd be more comfortable suggesting that we move them up into the code. And then it'll probably take, I don't know, a little time to analyze, talk about, and agree upon all the substantive changes that might be necessary now. And then we can do a new ordinance, and that would be my suggestion.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Emma, is there anyone else?
Yes, there's Carl Prey.
Okay. Not sure if it's Mary or Carl, but please state your name and address.
It's Mary. I'm not exactly sure. I can wait until the end to say this. This morning, The New York Times had an article about marijuana shops in Toronto. And I sent you a copy of all of it because I think it was a very, very interesting article and thought you might like to read it. I am very concerned about the financial implications of Pot and Highland Park. And I thought that this did a really good, had a really good analysis of what happened in Toronto. I remember at a public meeting that Councilman George called Pot one of the new industries in Highland Park, the other one being electric scooters. I personally found that a little bit bizarre. But I guess most of you believe its arrival will strengthen the borough's finances. I'm not so sure. Trenches obviously not a particularly good example of what will happen in Highland Park. But I think it is certainly an example of what could go wrong. Empty stores filled for a while, then empty, and everybody fighting over the town, spending a lot of time wasting, time wasted receiving and processing applications and overseeing some modifications. Like to say that just as Toronto is not necessarily a very good example of what Pot will do for Highland Park, the examples that you use to promote your densification of Highland Park's Central Business District are equally inappropriate. Just because Seattle and cities with populations of 100,000 people in Missouri have been at least initially successful building high-rise apartments and parking garages doesn't mean that strategy will work in a small town like Highland Park.
So, Mary, I'm sorry for interrupting you. I'm going through the agenda. I don't see cannabis on the agenda for tonight. So your comments would have to wait till the second session.
I can wait. I have more to say about it.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Actually, can I make one, have a question? I have one question. Since there are only three council members, don't you, is it three, a quorum? I mean, can you vote with only three council members?
Yes, we checked that out with the Borough Attorney. Borough Attorney, do you want to address that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Under the statute, if there are three members of council and the mayor present at the meeting, we have a quorum and we can conduct business.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about something that is on the agenda for this evening?
No, Mayor, there's no one else waiting to speak.
Okay, thank you, Emma. All right, in that case, we are going to move on. All right. Ed, did you have anything you needed to add to this session of comments?
No, Madam Mayor, I had no report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to ordinances that require a second reading. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the cap rate exception ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Calendar year ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA 40A, colon, four dash forty-five point fourteen, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit on publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
No moves.
Second.
Any public hearing?
I see no hands raised.
All right, then we're going to move on. May I have a motion and a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion?
Motion to adopt? Do we have a second? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
So could you please report on advertising amending the wrecker license for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, concerning regulations for wrecker operators and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt? Motion to take up ordinance and final reading?
Stephanie, was that a second?
Second.
Okay, any public hearing?
Mayor, I don't see any hands raised.
All right. May I have a resolution to adopt and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt?
You need a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Clerk, could you please report on advertising the board's committees and commissions ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park in Middlesex County amending Chapter Nine of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park by adding thereto Article 24, reconstituting the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion?
Second.
Okay, any public hearing?
Mayor, I do not see any hands.
Okay. May I have a resolution to adopt and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Just wanted to say that I think we heard the concerns of the members of the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, and I'm sure Council President George has as well. I just wanted to, this is one of those areas where, you know, we don't want to slow down government because government can move slow sometimes, but we also want to do it right. But since this was an existing ordinance that can be amended, I think it makes sense just to get that ordinance back on the books. And then we can amend it just like we would if it were a flawed ordinance, you know, beforehand. So acknowledging that STACK is a verified, real municipal commission is really important because there is nobody else that I trust more than the members of the Shade Tree Advisory Committee and all that you do for Highland Park. So I'm a yes to this, but let's get this fixed asap. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, and I just want to say, Melanie, Rosie, and the rest of the Shade Tree Advisory Council, I'm looking forward to our new Salem oak planting, which we have to get back to the Department of Environmental Protection on. It will be a wonderful new addition to our tree collection here in Highland Park. Okay, moving on to ordinances requiring a first reading. Clerk, could you please report on introduction of prohibiting smoking at town tables and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County, prohibiting smoking at the town tables and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park has been introduced in writing by Health and Human Services for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Borough Attorney.
Thank you. This is not a public hearing. This is just the introduction. But this afternoon, the Clerk's Office did receive a message, and we were asked to read that message into the record with your permission. I'll do that.
Yes, please do.
And it concerns this ordinance. I'm writing to you today regarding an item on the Agenda 14A, prohibiting smoking at the town tables and amending the code of Highland Park to reflect that. As the last mayor and council meeting, at the last mayor and council meeting on April 5th, Councilmember Matt Hale informed us that NJDOT told the Borough that it cannot close the road to install town tables. So why bother with this moot point? There currently is no legislation that allows closing of the roads for on-street dining, and that is what town tables are for. Previously, Executive Order 150 allowed it, but that expired January 21st. And the current law embodied in Public Law 2021, Chapter 15, specifically prohibits the use of the state right-of-way for outdoor dining. And there's a citation to Number Eight in that law. Nothing in this act permits the use of state-owned right-of-way for the purpose of outdoor dining. It does allow for dining on sidewalks and private properties, so why not extend the prohibition on smoking to those areas? Also, would you please tell us who informed the Borough that it could not reinstate the town tables, as Matt Hale has told us, and in what form that communication took? Sincerely, Mark Leibson. Thank you very much.
Point of order. If it's not a public comment, how is that comment submitted, but others can't comment?
Well, again, Matt, this was not a public hearing, as you know. This is just introduction on first reading. There'll be a public hearing later on. But under the current rules for remote meetings like this, a resident who cannot attend the remote meeting is permitted to submit a written statement about any item on the agenda. And where, or any item that may not be on the agenda to be covered in the second public comment section. This was really not testimony at a public hearing. This is rather a statement that we received and that we were asked to put on the record, which we're required to do under the DCA regulations.
No, I understand. I was just wondering why that wasn't included in the first public comment period, but okay.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda items. May I have a motion to adopt items 15A through 15D?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay. It is now time for the second public discussion session. Each speaker has three minutes, but may comment on any topic. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer a 30-second warning and then indicate when three minutes has lapsed. The session will wrap up by 9:00 PM. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button on this application. Please unmute yourself by pressing star six. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine on the raise hand button now.
Mayor Carl Prey has their hand raised.
Okay. I'm sure that's Mary. Mary, I'm thinking you want to continue where we left off. Mary? Mary, you need to unmute yourself?
Am I unmuted? Yes. Okay. The reason I sent you all that article about Toronto is that I think that there's something to be learned there. You think that the redevelopment plan that you are proposing is something that will work for Highland Park. And I just, as you know, I totally disagree about that. I have asked for, a long time ago, I asked for some information on who was sending in, who was responding to RFPs and to whom you sent copies of the RFPs. And I was told that it really was, to summarize, none of my business, that it was not something that I should be, have access to. Tonight, what I would like to say is that the deadline for sending in those RFPs is two and a half weeks. I know that six days after you passed that ordinance, December 10th, Terry Hovere sent an email to Attorney Bowman saying, "I'm going to send you my list of people who are interested. Please send me your list." So I know there are lists out there, and I'd like to know who's on those lists. I think we have a right to know that. I think that since I was told that I couldn't, it was not appropriate for me to know who was interested. I'd like to know how many people you sent the list to and how many people he sent the list to. And I'd like to know how many people have been interested in Track A, Track C, and Track D. And I think that it is really, you haven't been very silent about this. I think it's about time that you started talking about it. There haven't been any redevelopment meetings. And I think it's time for you to address the issue of the RFPs and tell us, give us some information. I think there are a lot of people who are very interested in it and are very concerned about it. And I have talked to many people about this. And many people find the whole, the whole strategy of density and building a parking garage very odd in a small town like Highland Park. So rather than, I'd like you to give us some information. I don't need it to be sent to me. I think that you should post the, at least I think that you should post at least, post some information on the website. I personally would like to see the names of the people who are interested because for me, I think it'd be useful to see what kind of development they do. Okay, so.
Mary, are you done?
I have one other point, but I'll raise my hand again. It's not related.
Okay, so first of all, I have no idea who submitted applications in response to the RFP. I don't think there's any, I know myself, and I believe none of the council members have been involved in the RFP process that is going through the redevelopment director and her responsibilities. She is gathering the responses, and as you mentioned, I think they're due by May 1st.
I'm sure. May 6th.
May 6th, okay. So I'm sure once May 6th has come and gone, she'll go through the, you know, like she would with any RFP, they'll go through the responses that were received, and those that fit and follow the guidelines of the RFP will be reviewed at that time. So like you, I'm anxious to see who is going to be submitting their RFPs. I know that whenever anyone expressed any interest in development in Highland Park, I've passed them on to Terry because that's where it belongs. It doesn't belong with the elected officials at this point.
Can I just respond to that? For me, as you know, I live near where you want to build a parking garage. And for me, it's concerning that you hired people who build parking garages to do a traffic parking study. I think that is a questionable thing. And I also think that we should get some information about this. I don't really believe that nobody knows anything. I think that it would be a lot better if the community knew what kind of developers were interested in developing Highland Park because I think that's the only way you will get buy-in because you clearly don't have my buy-in on this.
Yeah, as I said before, I'm also interested in seeing which developers are interested in Highland Park. I just have no clue right now, except for a couple who may have written me, and I've just passed them on to Terry.
But you know.
Councilman Hirsch, you have your hand up.
These responses, like any RFP process, are sealed until the, so, Mary, I don't know what you're asking, but you know how this works. These are sealed responses. Government is not involved in previewing the RFP responses before the deadline.
Well, government is involved because Terry Hovair and the redevelopment people, and you are the redevelopment people. You are the entity.
But these are sealed RFPs, so period.
Yeah. Okay, Terry, did you have, I mean, Mary, did you have another subject you wanted to talk about? Okay, Emma, do we have any other hands?
Yes, we have Daniel Stern Cardinal.
Okay, Dan, please state your name and address.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, Harper Street. Just commenting, I saw the, I got here a little bit late, but I saw the town table resolution, the banning smoking at town tables. I think that's a great call. Just make that a more family-friendly environment once they're up and running again. So I hadn't even thought of that as a thing, so whoever did that behind the scenes, thank you. Good call.
Thank you, Dan. Do we have any other hands, Emma?
Yes, Mary would like to speak again.
Okay. Mary, I know it's a pain, but I need to ask you to state your name and address.
Mary Forsberg, 317 Denison Street. My comment is just about the town tables. Number one, the town tables don't exist. There is no such thing as the town tables. And it is insulting for people who live on the north side of town that you are prohibiting smoking at the town tables when you have closed off, you know, part of North Third, but will not include that as a place where people should not be smoking. And people do smoke there, and they throw their cigarettes on the ground. So I think that this ordinance, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I think there's a question about whether this ordinance is an appropriate ordinance because the town tables don't exist.
Okay.
Is there a response to that?
Yeah, Borough Attorney, do you want to respond to that?
Well, from a practical point of view, if they're not there, there's nobody to prohibit smoking. But if the town tables were to come to fruition, this ordinance would be on the books, and it would regulate, among other things, the use of the town tables.
So you are talking about also closing North Third. So if you're going to push for both of those, you should be pushing for no smoking on North Third as well.
Councilman Hirsch, I see your hand up.
For raising this, Mary. The way that I read this was that it prohibits smoking on any designated street closure right-of-way for designated town tables. So we're using the term town tables, but I don't think we had anything on the books that prohibited smoking on street closures. So this is what I read. This is how I read this ordinance and why I supported it.
Thank you, Councilman. That's true. Okay. Emma, do we have any other hands?
Yes, there's Ruth.
Okay, Ruth, please state your full name and address.
Ruth Solomon, 704 South First Avenue. Are we, I tuned in a little late. Is this going to be a permanent thing where they're going to close Third Avenue off, South Third? Or is this just temporary while the COVID situation is going on?
This has been something we've been talking about for several meetings. And we have found the town tables at South Third and North Fourth to be very popular. And there is a trend with downtown communities to close off parts of streets and make them public places. And so what we've been talking about and talking with the DOT about is permission to permanently close South Third Avenue, and then we'll address any other streets that seem appropriate.
I just wondered how safe that is, and has the Chief of Fire and the Chief of Police commented on this as to whether this should be done permanently? And we are very fortunate to be double-ended by parks on both sides of the town. I don't understand why some of these people with these children, you know, don't go down there. You know, and I don't know that it's appropriate, you know, to close off a street in an already small town, you know, for what? Who's sitting there, and what do we need that for?
So what's happening, Ruth, is in downtowns that have closed off parts of their streets, they have done it not only to make areas for residents to gather and share in a communal kind of way, but also to benefit retailers. So the food that is purchased at our restaurants and coffee shops can be enjoyed by residents in the downtown, as I said, in a communal kind of way. We could talk some more about the town tables anytime you like.
I thought we were going to have a town square in the future. Is that still in the plans, like a town square when we redo the town?
There is a town square in the plans. Where that town square winds up being, we don't know exactly yet, but it could wind up being in the South Third area. It's a possibility. You also, you know, you are probably aware, we also, the Borough also purchased the parking lot that is next to the nursery school and a house on the property right next to it.
On Third, South Third?
On Third, correct.
Oh, well, that's off the street, so that's a good idea.
Yeah, that opens other options as well.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, Melanie has her hand raised.
Okay. Melanie, please state your name and address again.
Hi, this is actually Sophia.
Okay.
Sophia Victor, 330 South Third Ave. Just in response to the previous speaker, I wanted to add my own thoughts about the Third Street. I'm highly in favor of shutting that down permanently. It was really magical to have that last summer. I don't know if the previous speaker ever walked by because it was hugely popular, and all the tables were always filled. I think in terms of safety concerns, it's actually a really great place since we have that daycare there. It makes it way safer for everyone involved. I think all you have to do is look at New Brunswick with them having closed down George Street this whole time to see what a bustling center, closing off these pedestrian streets can be. I was very disappointed when it was taken away, and I'm very happy and fully in support of it being a permanent addition. I mean, I live on South Third Street, so I'm really a big fan. Just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Sophia. Emma, any other hands?
There are no other hands raised, hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
I was just going to ask if you had anything, Borough Attorney.
Yes, thank you. We received another request to enter a message into the record under this section of public comment, if I could read that.
Please do.
Thank you. At the mayor and council meeting on April 5th, Borough Administrator Terry Hovair mentioned that a draft parking study had been prepared by Level G Associates. The study was contracted to be performed by Level G to comply with the Planning Board Resolution 2021-4, adopted by Borough Council Ordinance 21-2030. As you may recall, the Planning Board's consistency review found that the Borough's plan for Track C did not conform to the master plan because it did not include parking for existing uses, and it required that the parking needs of the Reformed Church of Highland Park, RCHP, and businesses in the area of Track C needed to be verified. I wrote to Terry on April 6th, asked for a list of the businesses that were contacted and whether both the RCHP and the businesses located at our facility would be contacted to verify their respective parking needs, but neither of us had been contacted. I've not heard from Terry yet, for rent. I'm sure she is delayed in responding due to her workload, closed for rent. And I would like to know the answer to those questions and the information. Thank you. Mark Levis-Kine. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Borough Attorney. Terry is not here tonight to answer those questions, so we'll make sure she gets back to him. All right, do you feel like you need a five minutes of recess, or can we just plow ahead? Yes, all in favor of moving ahead, raise your hand. All who need a reset would like a recess.
Plow ahead.
Are you okay, Elsie? I can't hear you. You're on mute.
It's only three things, so I'm okay. Hopefully, it won't be three things that are very long.
I don't think so. Okay, Elsie, actually, you're one of the three.
I think we need to close the, don't we have to close this out, or no?
Yeah, we can go.
Go into work session?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I don't want to hold anything up. We are the municipal court.
Yes.
Number one, municipal courts. As you know, we are courts, the state has been, the country has been operating courts. Zoom court has been in progress all along. However, our court system, our judge has been going into the courts, and I've been working throughout COVID to hear cases and, you know, to handle his caseload. We were talking a while ago about different forms of municipal.
Could you try again?
Okay, Siri. That was not me. Siri just interrupted me. So what we're looking at is how do we proceed with municipal courts? There are certain mandates that we must follow. They're saying if we're going to have municipal court in person, we have to have all the security procedures put in place. However, the state is looking at a different way, or looking at different ways in which to handle municipal court. Because of COVID, people have seen that court system can be worked out in a lot of different ways that are very convenient for people who need to come into a court setting. With that said, I sent an email to each and every one of you last week describing the various steps that the courts are looking at and how to proceed. So more to follow up on this. I just wanted to discuss it here about how they are looking at proceeding with handling municipal court going forward. So one step could be the continuation of Zoom courts. They have made clean-down cases without going to courts a lot easier, so you don't have to take time off of work to go in. There's different forms that's on the NJ site, that we, municipal court website, where you can go in and you can have your case pled and between the judge and the prosecutor without you taking time off of work or being greatly inconvenienced to come into court. So that's one system that's there that I think is extremely helpful. And then we're looking at how much more can we do to accommodate courts and for cases that need to be heard or must be heard, say, for example, a DUI or some kind of traffic, major traffic offense. They're looking at how does that get handled through the court system? Those, you definitely have to come into the court system for. But how are we going to move ahead with municipal court in the state of New Jersey? Much more to follow on this. We were exploring this a while ago to see if there were possibilities to consolidate courts. I think the time is right because COVID has proven to us that this is something that can be done and that it can be done remotely and maybe different ways of bringing court systems under one umbrella. And that would be a huge cost savings for us because it takes time, energy, and people power to make us come into municipal court from the hiring of extra security, the devices that need to be put in place. So we're looking at all those pieces to see if we can do more courts with more translation and more Zoom courts, so to speak. I will keep you, each and every one of you, posted as we move forward in trying to formulate what it is that hopefully the state, the AG office, and the courts will be doing to make court accessible for all.
Elsie, does it make sense for us to reopen the shared court services discussion we started having before COVID?
Yes, yes. It definitely makes sense to continue that shared court, especially now because it has ranked up to where the state is looking at it because they see that having a Zoom court is much more convenient for the people who need, who come in for this service. It's convenient for them. They're making it streamlined that you don't have to physically come into a building anymore to pay certain fines or certain offenses that can be taken care of in different portals. So that's what they're looking at, such as DUIs or other major offenses, so to speak. They're looking at ways, how can we do, say, a consolidated court system? There may be, for lack of a better term, say, you have four towns that come together and have like a municipal court or a county court system where it falls under one umbrella, and there's this huge cost savings that would be had from having it that way. So the conversation is ongoing with that is concerned because I believe at the end of the day that it's going to be a huge cost savings for all.
Good. So there may be some good that comes out of all of this stuff.
I'm hoping so. I'm hoping so.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Matt Hirsch, standing committees.
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't think I realized this was going to be a work session item. But since it is here, I know that there, I just wanted to raise the issue with the council members that are here, that there are some kind of free-floating committee assignments that have traveled with various council people, even through changes in committee assignments and so forth. And I had been assigned as a Safe Walking and Cycling Committee group, which I'm very proud to represent, even though I am the chair. even though I am the Chair of the Arts and Recreation Committee, so it doesn't, it's kind of a square peg in a round hole a little bit. And there is some overlap there. So I wanted to just have a continued conversation, maybe with our, with our administration, with our administrative committee on how to address that because a lot of like, like Councilwoman Foster said before, all of a sudden I found myself in the midst of a, of a public, of a very significant public safety issue that Councilwoman Foster should have been really the point on. And we, you know, obviously, we, we talk and we, you know, we kept each other up to date and everything. But just as far as kind of, you know, efficient, kind of good governance concerned, I thought that that was worth raising.
So I think that there are probably other areas too we should be looking at, and perhaps we can start thinking about all of this so that when we're ready, I know it seems a long way off, but, but so that when we're ready in January with our reorganization, we have committees set up properly. Councilwoman Foster.
To be, Matt, that swag was a really, originally under public safety, as you can tell, because it has all this public safety components to it. But Councilmember Wolkowitz, she worked on it, and it was like her baby at one point because we were working on it, and she really wanted it, so we separated out so she could continue working on it. But I think you're doing a great job. We should keep it there.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to get rid of anything, I promise. I love, I love the group. I just, I just wanted to, you know, you know, when there's overlap, just us being very intentional about keeping each other up to date on what's going on as, as I will with Elsie. Because all of a sudden, you know, the Smart Campaign, for example, which is a major, you know, Borough initiative, the police have really, you know, been a major leader in that as well. So that's, that's where, you know, there is, and I'm all for overlap. I, I like, I like that because I think it, you know, having, us all having an understanding of all the machinations is important. But I think there is a few areas, though, where, where we may want to just kind of look a little more closely and see what that overlap looks like. But no, Elsie, I'm, I'm here for you. Swag. I'm all about swag.
Okay. So the last thing we have on the work session is actually something I wanted to bring to you. You know, we've been doing a lot, we've been talking a lot and doing a lot in terms of public art and murals are becoming more and more popular. So I was approached by a Borough resident whose husband recently passed away, and they, they had some very strong connections to the city of New Brunswick. And she has a very well-known mural artist who is interested in, in putting together a mural for Highland Park that would represent the connection between Highland Park and New Brunswick. So I don't know if you, you'll see much of this. I'm showing you some of the work she has already done. As you can see, she does things on a rather large scale. Mirror image of the word libertad. She's done billboards. This is a more recent mural. So I'm showing you this to let you know that I am all in favor of public art. And as we move forward, we'll be, I'd like to communicate with you so that you have an idea of what's coming, what they're working on. Matt, you've got the Arts Commission under your bucket, so I'd like to get them involved in all of this. And I think moving forward, there's a lot of opportunity for us to really put Highland Park on the map from a public arts perspective. Elsie, you're raising your hand.
We need to have a conversation about Zone 6 Center because we've been trying to get some help to get something that's very reflective of our community put on the Zone 6 Youth Center. And I think something that shows our diversity and who we are is Highland Park. And we, we have been struggling, so I would like to speak with that person as well to see if there's any interest there for someplace where young people gather that they could come up with something really creative that is reflective of our town.
So I will be happy to share that with her, and Matt, you may want to share that as well with the Arts Commission. And that's all I have. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. I can finish dinner.
Second.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a safe.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Night.